Meeting to order at 6:00. And before I adjust the agenda yet, because I don't want to get behind schedule, I feel it necessary to welcome a new member to the Navy family because Kate has gotten accepted to the Naval Academy, which is really exciting. Go Navy!
(inaudible)
Although we're leaving this year.
Keeps the family going.
Yeah, keeps the family going. The CVSD presence. Teach them how to do it. Okay, I'm going to make a few adjustments to the agenda. The first one I'm going to make, I had a request, June's not here, to take the door hardware bid out of the consent agenda, so that'll become 8.3 Action Matters. I'm also going to adjust some of the times, just to kind of manage expectations. We had gotten some feedback on the meeting evaluation forms about, you know, the times that are on the agenda, we don't necessarily stick to. Sometimes conversation goes long, and I just want to make sure we all are kind of aware of how much time we've allotted, which honestly, I haven't paid a whole lot of attention to in the past. So for some reason, we tend to go way over on a discussion. I'm just going to do a time check when it says we should be off and make sure we're okay, we're still discussing, or if we need to kind of move on. If that makes sense. So to that end, I'm going to adjust the time for 5.0 budget. Instead of ending at 7:00, it'll end at 7:30. Reports to the board will go from 7:30 to 8:15. Discussion matters, I have 8:15 to 8:45. Action matters, I have 8:45 to 9:15. And then the consent agenda, I have from 9:15 to 9:20. We will have an executive session after the meeting tonight. So we'll see how that works. I'll try and pay attention. I'm sure Dave will let me know if I get way off.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, so, any other adjustments to the agenda? Okay, any audience and communications? We're already ahead of schedule. I like that. Okay, 4.0 presentation. This is a third in our presentation on personalized learning, and it's going to start with Jeff.
Yeah, so just wanted to, before handing over to Adam, do a little context reminder. Two years ago, we had a cycle of presentations around social-emotional learning in our district. Last year, it was about proficiency-based learning, where we brought in lots of folks from different schools to show you how the implementation looks in those areas. And then this year, the focus is on personalization. We started with a high school, and the first presentation was primarily around the RISE experience. And then Adam brought in a panel of folks that talked about programs and classroom implementation of personalization. And then we thought it would be really important to wrap it up with really just a more brief presentation that ties all three things together, talks about their visioning, how those three things do work in concert with one another, with what they're calling think, feel, act. And then, when we come back to these presentations after the budget cycle, we'll have middle-level folks coming in to talk about how it works and how it looks in their schools. So that's the context. So we are going to, I am going to be pretty strict with the time. We do want to keep it brief. Adam's really here to just kind of share some visioning and some of the next steps in terms of how they work together. Okay?
Great.
And thanks again to Adam for coming in for the third strike.
Seen a lot of me this fall. Thanks for having me. So more than anything, I'll probably, we've encapsulated a lot of our thinking in this document, so I'm going to describe what the document is, give you a chance to ask some questions about it. But it may be that you want to read this and then ask me questions at a different meeting, and that's fine, given the time constraints. So Jeff's exactly right. When we talk about think, feel, and act, and we're thinking about personalization, proficiency, and social-emotional learning, the reality is, when you're working with students, or you're in a school, or you're part of a community, these three things are integrated at all times. It's not like I'm talking with Elise and saying, "Right now, we're working on our social-emotional learning." You know, it's pretty clear that these three initiatives, I wouldn't even say initiative, these three frameworks feed off of one another and cannot be separated. So we created a document, the think, the feel, and the act. The think loosely refers to proficiency, the feel loosely refers to social-emotional learning, and the act refers more to personalization. You'll see the design on the cover of this document is trying to bring these, kind of the idea of these three things being together in a more global sense. So this document we created with the intent of it to be aspirational. I think three-quarters of this document is actively happening right now, and the other quarter are the, is the larger system design that we're moving forward to, to bring the three elements that Jeff described together. The document is also meant to be invitational and directional. So invitational in that sometimes when we talk about proficiency-based learning, or we talk about personalization, or we talk about SEL, whenever we're throwing acronyms out there, particularly to our community, a lot of times we're using things like learning targets, and scales, and summatives, and formatives, and that doesn't always feel invitational. The jargon itself and the acronyms put our community at a distance. So we wanted to create something that was invitational. This is one of my favorite Far Side cartoons from the old days. Just the idea that we need to have pull energy around these movements and not push energy. Like, it feels like a lot of times that we're pushing our students into something, or pushing our faculty, or pushing our community. Why not invite people into this work and allow them to get excited about it by thinking about the outcomes and by thinking about what the larger picture could look like? We wanted to be personal and also comprehensive. So you heard a lot about personalization in the last two meetings. In your mind, you should be thinking, "Well, that's great, but is this just a nexus program, or is this just what happens if you happen to be in these particular classes or have these particular teachers?" No, we have to have a larger systems design so that every student has the benefit of personalization throughout their career. So this tries to describe what that currently looks like, and more importantly, what it will look like in a couple of years. So you'll see that this document, if you open it up, page one is, and it's, the audience really would be a prospective parent, is describing day one. What happens when your kid comes to CBU? There's a major typo on this page. If anyone can find it, I will ask you to just keep quiet about it and not give you an award, but I already know it's there. So, but it's describing apparently what will you, what will your child experience day one at CBU? And then the think, feel, and the act piece is more of the why. Why, as a system, are we moving in this direction? What's important about this? As you turn towards the middle, you'll see more of a how and what. So what will CBU look like? And you'll also see a key, so you can understand some of the terminology that we've been using. And then finally, we wrap up with kind of the why again, but also the final day. Like, so when your student's exiting CBU, why will it have been important that they've been in the system? You know, why will these, the think, feel, and the act have mattered to them, to you? And then, of course, we don't want to leave our graduation standards out on the back, which is the framework. The graduation standards uphold all of this work. Everything goes through these standards. So I don't know if you want to, I mean, up to you. I know you have a ton to do tonight. Do you want to take a moment or two to look through this, to ask questions? But I don't want to be respectful of your time. Yep?
Can you tell me, like, how you produce it?
How? Great, I even have an in. Uh, what did I do with that? Sorry, say again, how did we produce it?
Well, that's an interesting question as well. I'm just wondering how this is actualized. What's the, you don't need to get into the nuts and bolts, but like, does everybody know about it?
Yeah, let me say, worry about that, because I actually prepared this slide to talk about that. So the, on the right side, in the red lettering, are the number of groups at CBU who've had a hand in developing this. So we really started in earnest to try to document this in 2017. So we started with our curriculum instructional team, then our leadership team, and then our professional learning communities leadership team. So we started with something called, we called it Model. It was like Model 1.0, and then it ended up being Model 5.0, and then Model 5.0 became this document. And you'll see that we had, we have focus groups. Some of you may have attended that, actually, a couple of years ago, where we had educators from all the state come in, we had parents, students. Our program council took a look at this document, our curriculum clearinghouse. John Siddle's actually a designer we worked with, and he, it's really fun to meet with a designer and have him come into your school. The things that you hear, he's like, "Every time I walk into a school, it feels like I'm 15 years in the past." And that's a good reminder of what we have on our walls and those kinds of things. Our principals advisory council, faculty, class, and think tank. So all of these groups have touched it. Full faculty, we spent pre-service looking at this document and generated a list of really hundreds of questions. So right now, we have a, I won't, well, you can see now, anyone use Trello at all? That's a really great design tool, but we have all of like the cards to make this come to life, the 70 different steps that we need to take, but I won't dive into that. We have a design team process this year, so we have two teams, called the graduation determination team and an exit experience team, working on this. So you can see some of our timeline for the year for answering some of the most important questions, the backward design piece, right? Let's get really clear about exactly what our graduation determination is as opposed to calculation. Does that answer your question, or is that?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds to me like it's been a very iterative process where there's lots of buy-in and opportunity for feedback and so forth versus a top-down approach. Therefore, you probably have lots of buy-in on it.
I hope so. Yeah, I hope so, and I hope it's a balance of both bottom-up and top-down.
Yeah.
I had a teacher recently remark what it felt like to be working in proficiencies at a different school before coming to CBU, where it was very bottom-up, and said it was great, because in our classrooms, every teacher was doing something slightly different with proficiencies. And then what a relief it was to come to CBU where there had been a little more structure so that you felt that autonomy, but you also had a system that you were a part of. So it wasn't as confusing. But there, I think we need more student voices, and we need more parent voices on this as we're going forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, can you talk to us about a plan of that continuous engagement of those groups? Like, how are you keeping them engaged with the continued changes that might come, you know, within our community? So how do you plan to keep them engaged and informed on what changes are influencing?
Yeah, well, first of all, we're thinking this is a living document, so it's not like, boom, here it is, we're continuing to work on it. So for example, we have a program council meeting tomorrow, which is, you know, we have student representation on that, we have faculty representation on that. So we've broken this document down into more discrete steps for the things we need to work on. That group's going to look at those discrete steps, give feedback on it to our Center for Learning team that's working on it. So then there's a kind of a constant back and forth. You really, you can't do this work with integrity without there being a lot of hands involved at all times, so.
So I know this is a new document, but, you know, thinking long-term in the future, since proficiency, personalization, and social-emotional learning, we're doing 5 through 12. Was there any input or thought about bringing the middle schools into something, getting their input on this, or incorporating them, so it really is a 5-12 continuum?
Yeah, well, part of the, that's a great question, and part of the idea with this document is, let's set something down as an end vision so that people can then react to it. And, you know, it's nice to be aspirational, but when you're not being concrete with the aspirations, then it's hard to really move forward. So in some ways, this is a rough draft that we now can bring to our K8 system and say, you know, what do you think?
I'm looking for it on the website, and I, you know, just did a quick Google search. Is it going to be available to the public?
We need to work on it a little bit more, but yeah, right now, it is, right? It's out there, but yeah, we haven't put it online yet.
I was given a challenge to do it quietly, and I fulfilled the task.
They're going to do it.
Yeah, and you asked us not to point it out. I just wanted to find it before Lynn did, and that was all.
There will be another.
I will bring you some pizza.
Anything else?
It's very exciting, thank you.
Thank you for putting it down. Okay, we are on to, well, hold on, just real quick. The budget, 5.0 budget FYI '21 topic, and we're going to start with Jean to do the first draft of the budget overview.
You may want to tell Jean one thing, since she came in late.
What should I tell her?
8.3.
Oh, 8.3, thank you. We pulled something out of the consent agenda, the Shelburne door hardware.
Yes, finally! Somebody cares about door hardware!
You can thank Russ.
If you'd gotten here early, we wouldn't have had to pull it out, we would have just asked you.
All right, so nobody, um, let's talk about budget first. I left my notes on there. You got me so excited, I left my notes over here. Okay, so I have copies. Want them now? Promise not to read ahead? Or do you want them after?
I'm a visual learner, I like that.
Copies are right there, if you want to pass them around.
I promise I won't look ahead.
You can look ahead, you just can't ask questions about what you haven't talked about yet.
Right, well, that's true.
That's really all you.
Or just go. Okay, well, we're.
It's like a voice in your own insecurities.
Door hardware I'm ready for. Each for this presentation, maybe not. Okay, so, welcome to budget season. I'm going to start off by saying that you're going to see that we've had some struggles to get to a number that we feel is going to be acceptable to the board, and so therefore, the finance committee hasn't even seen the numbers. Everyone's seen this all together this time. Going to start briefly by revisiting the board's role in the budget process. If you remember, last year, we kind of did it every presentation, maybe we'll just do it this once, just as a reminder. Then the financial board goal, have something talked about with that numbers, and then high-level view of the first pass. So these, next to, this slide and the next one are getting a little long in the tooth. These were from the May 2017 board retreat. And I didn't correct the budget dates or anything, because I really want these to be what we've done before, but just as a reminder, and perhaps we, it would be appropriate on the board, we're planning to revisit a little bit, but the consensus of the board, we put this new presentation as a consolidated district, or this new process as a consolidated district together, was these maybe nine points. So the board represents the community in the educational system, in what it feels is affordable to the community. The board sets policy. Policy where it works, like class size policy, and sort of accept, reviews and accepts or questions, recommendations of the superintendent on things where policy isn't directly there. The next one, sort of what we've been struggling with this year, provides a direction to the superintendent on spending priorities through review of educational outcomes and board goals. So that's sort of, that was aspirational two years ago, and it's, we're still working a little bit of a time to get to that. Clearly, big one, the board negotiates compensation. On this slide, the board prioritization of equity, we're talking about equity of resources. This has been a multi-year process to try to equalize resources across our K8s, where I think we're, I think we're pretty much there. We're very, it's very happy that we've made that progress, but the prioritization of that being an important factor is a board role. We achieved the stated consolidation savings last year, so we're thinking of probably not continuing that, because we're pretty far away from consolidation, frankly, at this point. Special ed, as you all know, is, you're really, it's an oversight of the process because of the confidentiality and some of the other issues we have in special ed. So when you see Megan's presentation, she's going to focus more on the process, as opposed to this child needs this service, right? And the capital plan, which you, board, has been remarkably generous, and we've made a lot of progress, and as soon as I get my door hardware, we'll be in good shape. So that's sort of the goals. So if you remember from last month, the board approved a target, what the, we had asked, what the finance committee administration had come and said, we'd like the target, rather than just to be on some CPI kind of indicator, it should really reflect the realities on the ground. So we asked for a target that took into account an estimate of where we think we'll end up on salaries in negotiation. And of course, we discussed that in executive session. We asked that we be allowed to include the 13.2% increase on healthcare, which we've been told is going to hit us. So that's in there. And then we said everything else, we can live with the CPI, neat but neep, actually. New England Economic Project or something, right? Which is the indicator the state uses for education. So that was the target, and I came to you and I gave you this lovely model, and it was beautiful, 3.3% increase. And we said, you know, the math says it would drop down to a 3.4% increase on net education spending per pupil, which is what drives your tax rate, that factor. I said, "We'll be generous, I'll just go with the 3.3." Elaine had some words with me after saying that, but that was the idea. So, so, almost good to go. I'm looking at the numbers, the first rollup, and it's like, wow, these numbers don't really fit in the 3.3. Mark, how come healthcare is so high? Well, I made a mistake. I assumed that healthcare started on January 1st, when enrollment starts. So I only had a half of the 13.2% in the rollup at 3.3%. And if Mark had only made me read the email where he told me specifically that I was wrong, so it's all his fault.
There was no email.
We're just glad you looked at numbers carefully.
This one was a bit of a shocker. So unfortunately, the 3.3, if I were to have had that information and done the calculation correctly, it would have been 4.4. So 4.4% increase on spending, and if you dropped it right down, 4.4% on net ed spending per equalized pupil, that's a pretty high number compared to what our community's been looking at. So hence the, didn't have a budget to show the finance committee two weeks ago. One thing that you'll see, you'll see on the next slide is, we, well, I guess I can go to the next slide. No, this one is right. So the first bullet, so when we corrected it, would be 4.4, rather than 3.3. In that, you know, I just walked it through what the target was, that assumes that special ed would abide by those, would increase according to only those two things, and it hasn't. You'll see that tonight, we had some issues that are going to drive that number higher. So it was not containable in the 4.4. Luckily, offsetting that, we did some very early estimates on our student count, because we know across the board, we've been having some upward pressure on student count, or at least, it's not dropping the way that they have been forecasted. We also found an error in last year's ADM count, which we've been able to correct. So really good news, our ADM count's going up, our student count's going up, so the cost per ADM miraculously gets better. So it's, that's a little bit good news. So the budget that we're recommending is $82,546,323. I left the cents off. It's a 4.6 increase on the expense versus 4.4, but when you get down to the net ed spending per equalized pupil, which is the tax rate driver, it's 3.9. So we got it under four. So that's the budget you'll be seeing. So real high level, and you'll be seeing these not, I'm not going to go into great detail, because you'll be seeing these mostly from Megan tonight and Elaine, mostly from Elaine in a couple of weeks. So these are the sort of the important things that are in this number.
Jean, before you skip, can I just ask for just clarification? So the 3.3 number that we had originally been shopping around in our brains is indicative of healthcare, but it only incorporates a six-month span because of the fiscal year, right?
It only, it only included the six-month span, because I assume the first half of the fiscal year would be on the old rates, and the second half of the fiscal year would be on the new rates, and instead, the whole year's on the new rates.
So, okay. And, but the, but that healthcare fiscal year mimics our budget fiscal year, correct?
It does now, yes.
It does now? Is this due to this cycle?
You know what, I'm going to say that I got mixed up in my head, because the first year, or the only other year I've done this, was the year we all changed all the healthcare entirely, and it was a big change in January.
Yeah.
So that's why I was mixed up.
But I mean, net-net, over the course of a 12-month period of time, it would have been that, more towards that 4.4.
Yes.
Number versus a 3.9.
Yes.
Okay, so it's really not, in my, for like, I'm trying to think of like a number marketing finance spin. So the driver here is to educate the public that we were looking at six months compared to 12 months. Now, the 12 months is incorporated, the number hasn't changed all that much, as evidenced by the 3.9. It's just now you're seeing real time in 12 months for medical, or for health.
Yeah, it sounds like the methodology hasn't changed at all, it's just we had a miscalculation on healthcare.
And we really haven't, I mean, except for me showing it to you at the last board meeting, I'm not really sure we've shopped around that 3.3 number.
Well, that's what I mean, I just, I don't think it's a shocker, it's just now you're incorporating 12 months instead of a six-month period. Okay.
Although that's a, I mean, for marketing purposes, we probably would want to not confuse people.
Yeah, and I really would like to, actually, I have notes I forgot to say.
Well, it's education.
There's a lot of stuff, I'm going to show you really quick, that is probably just, absorb it, you're going to have a couple more meetings to try to get to the real details. I think this budget has got some really phenomenal things in it that are going to, you know, not, I hope, I hope that's what the public's going to take away, is we're making some really nice changes to our education system that'd be very exciting, and whether it's 3.3 or 3.9, it'll, I hope, is not, is not the key. But we'll get to that, we have four budget meetings together.
And we still don't know what the state is going to come down with, you know, their numbers as well, so.
Right, right. A lot of unknowns. Okay, so we had some shifts in grant funding on early literacy teachers out of Shelburne. This budget does correct for that, so that they're not losing resources for early literacy in Shelburne. We have included a block of money to address whatever comes out of the equity audit. So we have not said particularly what that's for, but it's about a teacher's worth of spending, so we can use that in whatever way is appropriate coming out of the audit. That's in here. There are continued improvements to the intervention framework that I think will be very exciting to listen to. We've made some investments in essential arts towards the equity lens, so we're realigning some of the essential arts in the K8s, we, collectively, we, not just me and my mouse in my pocket. So we're going to try to equalize the resources across the district in essential arts, and also some of the offerings that, if you remember from a couple of years ago, when we looked at this, they're very different between the schools, when we were having some conversations. There's funding in here, more talk is necessary, but funding in here to try to get the opportunities to be a little more equal across the K8s as well, particularly in the world of STEM. So we're trying to provide some resources to the schools where STEM is not a big part of their essential arts component today, and it should be. We're reconfiguring the guidance program at CBU because of some needs, not meeting all the needs of all the students, reconfiguration of the leadership team, and an additional school guidance counselor. Those are both in here, you'll hear about those on December 3rd. Operationally, it's a steady year in the operations world, so transportation, all the rest of the really exciting stuff, you know, just, we're just holding steady. No cuts, because I know it's always, it was always a problem, is you got in trouble education-wise, you cut something out of your maintenance staff, but no cuts, holding steady. We're very happy with the support that we're getting from the board for them. So very high level, and you'll hear a lot more about this, I don't think this is the only time you're going to see these. Just on the however, just remember, these numbers, there's a couple caveats. One is the special ed budget that is in my numbers here are $250,000 lower than what Megan's going to show you. Megan's team has got a challenge that they're, have to work through to contain their special ed costs. So that's sort of an unknown. We used to have a word, an IBM would say, "solutionize," or something word that. We used to have a word, an IBM would say "solutionize" or something, word that wasn't really a word. So we're working on that.
I don't like that.
But it's, but I had to work hard not to put "solution" up, but it's, so, so that's in there. So that's a big assumption. The other thing, another big assumption, like I said, we worked very hard to get it to 3.9, which we thought was a more manageable thing. We're holding the HRA. If you remember, we don't 100% fund the HRA. We, because historic industry numbers say that people use about 60% as a big group. If you remember, when we look at the fourth quarter, fourth quarter FMR, we were higher than that. And because of all the confusion with that first year of implementation, we aren't convinced. We're, we may be somewhere between 60, we're not higher than 65. This assumes 60, which is sort of another risk on the budget right now. We think, if, go ahead.
It's, just because of the, that first year in the, in the time that the HRA, confusingly, the HRA runs January to January instead of July to July, which is what the healthcare runs. Some of that, some of that problems of the first year bleed over into another year. So we're just kind of watching that HRA to see if it kind of smoothes out, which it has over the past six months or so. But 60% might end up being a little low.
And Mark, can I ask, why does it run on a different account?
So because the HRA, so Blue Cross Blue Shield runs their healthcare, and the HRA is run as almost a separate benefit, but it's run on the tax year because it's part of a, it's part of the group of regulations around like if you have a flexible spending account or those sorts of things. So they run on a tax year that runs January to January. It's just a different model. Although we talk about them together, they're really separate benefits.
Some of the numbers that are in here are very early. We have a pretty large number on, on the, the cost of sending our pre-K kids to the private providers. That's, we're kind of using it, we don't know what that number is. We won't know for a couple of weeks yet, hopefully in December. But that's, we've just kind of used a number that we think makes sense. VOTEC is the same way. Our insurance is the same way. There's a lot of pieces that are still dribbling in, and so we've made a good faith estimate. But there will be changes before we get a final budget. This is the first pass. And I would never, Bob Mason never would do this either. So never try to calculate revenue or equalized pupil counts this early in the budget cycle. But I desperately needed to know if that, if I could get to 3.9, you get under a 4% number. So I've got some estimates in there, but we don't have the numbers from the state. We don't have all the revenue numbers. Revenue's, revenue's in pretty good shape, but a lot of the other things are still out there. They're sort of estimates. So I just want, didn't want, you're going to see a lot of numbers that get down to the dollar. Remember, $323 if, what's the difference? There's accuracy and there's another word for it, precision or something. It's, this is, this is a very precise number on a lot of assumptions. Okay, so, those of you who are good and didn't jump ahead, here's what we're looking at. It's the total general fund at the 82,546, change of $3.6 million, 4.6% overall. This breaks out special ed, you can see it's at 6.2%. That's what's driving the number higher than 4.4. Here's the general ed, broken out between salary benefits and everything else, 4.6. When you, when you see Elaine's presentation, you'll see that we're adding some staffing in this area, so 4.6 makes some sense. Operations is about 4. I think it's, I think it's lower than the 4.4 you'd expect because not all of the spending in operations is personnel, right? A lot of it's at that 2.7 number, so that's where we are for the first pass. And here's just a reminder of the budget calendar. So you're going to see special ed tonight. You'll see regular ed delivery on December 3rd. Operations and maintenance on the 17th. And after the new year, as always, that's when we get into revenue and tax implications and the warning approval on the 21st. Okay? And then?
Jean, you said student count is basically level. If not up, we're not going.
It's pretty level. Yep. But remember, the equalized pupil count is two years looking backwards.
Backwards.
Yes. Hallie?
It's really hard to look at a budget like this without falling into the old trap of the barter. If you want to keep special ed, then you better remove the early literacy initiatives or whatever it might be. You know, it's hard not to fall into that trap of wanting to borrow, barter. But I just wonder, I don't need that explanation of how those decisions were made. I'm curious, specific to special ed, about how that number came up in a 250-go-get. Is that based on state, the state legislation?
The 250 comes from what, where the special ed budget originally came in at the first roll-up and where we need it to be to be able to fit into the number here. So that's the first answer. But the answer to your other question, I will talk a little bit about the process because we're not quite, we're not quite there yet. And I, I will share how, how we will approach that going to get 250 because it's kind of related to what you just shared. I wouldn't call it bartering, but it is, but it's, it's related. So I will talk a little bit about that. Yeah.
Other questions? Russell? Oh, sorry.
So whether it's 4.6 or 3.9, to me, it's a big number, especially at a time when inflation is tuitionish. I guess, so if healthcare is, is one of the biggest drivers here, I think one of the things that I at least would like to know is, or you know, to kind of see separated out, you know, how much of this is driven by, you know, just healthcare versus all other? And, or, or maybe even slice and dice it more than that. I don't know whether we're going to get a number from, you know, the Scott administration that says, you know, we, like they've done in the past, you know, we want to see all budgets no more than X, you know, X percent or whatever. But I am concerned, and I'm sure you are too, you know, with these numbers and to the extent that it is healthcare or something that is, you know, largely an uncontrollable for us, I think it's important to understand kind of what that is and what its real impact is. And, and, you know, is probably something that we're going to want to educate the public on, that that, you know, as much as anything, that this is what's driving these numbers that otherwise I think are, you know, big scary numbers.
Do you know when Beike gets their final?
So the reason for healthcare increases were proposed in September, they were usually approved in January.
They haven't been refused their past increase in a very long time. So January 5th-ish is usually around.
Yeah, so I can do that. We just need to be a little bit careful because the salary benefits is a one big number that's
Yep.
Give me a second. Okay. Thank you. Megan?
So, we're going to do three things hopefully tonight. One, I'm going to share just a little bit of context around special ed funding. There were some rule changes. Oh, thank you for doing that, passing that around because there's charts on here with numbers that are going to be hard to see on the screen. So don't look ahead if you can, but you will want to look at it. Thank you for doing that. I will talk a little bit about the process and timeline so that you have a sense of how the special ed budget is built and where we are in the process right now. And then we'll look at a lot of information. We'll look at where the budget sits currently, including comparisons across schools. We'll look at the kind of programmatic and instructional things that are happening. And then I'll entertain questions. So the first, you've heard, well, you've read in updates and you've, you've heard from me a little bit about Act 173. So last year at this time, we thought that we were facing, that we were in the, that this year that we're in would be the last year of receiving special ed funding in a reimbursement model, which is what we've been in for a long time. We get roughly 56% of our special ed dollars back in reimbursement, and we get about 90, it's now 95%, back for high-cost students. But, so I showed you a chart last year that looked like this, but that, that has changed. The legislature in the spring delayed the implementation of Act 173. So that means that we thought we would be building a budget that would no longer receive money next year through reimbursement, that we would receive it through a census-based grant. That's delayed a year. So that's essentially what this chart says. Right now, we're here, we're still getting reimbursement right now, the way we are used to getting reimbursement, and the same thing will happen next year. So when Jean does her revenue estimates, it will be the same way we've always done that. So right now, everything we spend in special ed comes back to us about 50% and more for some. That is important in a year where our increases are high, especially when we have individual students who have very high-cost programs. Russ?
So do we expect that Act 173?
Yep.
Hard to keep all these acts straight. Will ultimately make us more cost-effective? And so why did the legislature, or state government, however you want to describe it, push it back? And is there concern that this is, you know, are they going to completely backslide on this and kill it?
Yeah.
Or, you know, where do we think this is going?
It's a good question. I don't think that they, if I had a crystal ball, I don't think that it will go away. In fact, I'm pretty confident it won't go away. The delay was primarily because the stakeholders, largely driven by the Act 173 Advisory Group, felt that the state had not adequately moved through the rulemaking process, had not given a, a clear picture of the professional development support that would be given to districts, and there were too many unknowns. So the recommendation was made to the, to the General Assembly to delay a year. The rules were all about flexibility because for us, we spend just below the state average in special ed. That Vermont spends a lot, I understand that, but we spend a little bit below. So for us, the financial impact is not as significant as other districts. But what we gain out of 173 is flexibility, and there was concern that the initial drafts of rules were not going to give us the flexibility that we would want. I'm not hearing a lot of, I'm not actually at all hearing a push to not implement 173. I'm hearing a lot of acknowledgement of how difficult the programmatic side of things is going to be for some schools. I don't think that's the case for us because largely the programmatic implementation of Act 173 is implementing MTSS, which we've been doing for a really long time. Any other questions about state funding? One of the things that is different, the threshold for extraordinary costs, so extraordinary cost is when an individual student's program is costly. And the threshold used to be $50,000, and we would be reimbursed at 90% for everything above $50,000. The threshold went up to 60. And that, that actually makes a big difference. That takes some students who would have been considered extraordinary costs and, and they don't hit that threshold. But on the other side, you get 95% reimbursement for costs above 60. So there's, what that means is for students with extremely high-cost programs, we get a lot of support back. For students whose program hovers around 60, 65,000, we don't get very much reimbursement back. Budget and process and timeline. So this chart that you can look at later is just to give you a sense of the leadership structures around special ed. So the special ed leadership team is myself and the building-based directors in each of our schools, and Shelley Henson, our early ed director. And collectively, we oversee all of these elements of our programming, and there's a little bit of information about the schools there, although there's more information in later charts. But I always include this because decision-making, so special ed budget is driven by individual teams who make decisions around what kids need. And the fact that we have leadership embedded in buildings to help with that decision-making, I think has a lot to do with why we stay under the state average in special ed spending because the decision-makers are very close to the students and close to the faculty and close to the people who are delivering it. So budget process. I'm just going to do kind of a high-level overview. There's a lot of detail that happens in between these bullets. But the process for us begins back in the spring. So in May and June, this budget is built from the student up. So case managers take a look at their entire caseload, all the kids they work with, and they make a prediction about what services they are going to need next year based on what they're receiving now. They enter that into a software program. Over the summer, the building administrators get that information and they make changes. They add any students that are entering the system, usually through early ed. Shelley Henson has, gives us a lot of information now that we haven't had in the past about kids moving in. We adjust it for kids who are exiting. They look at things like occupational therapy, physical therapy, ancillary services that happen. And then in fall, the process kind of speeds up a little bit. I meet individually with all of the special ed directors to look at their budget, to look at comparative data, how they compare to their peers, what their trends have been, what, you know, kids are moving in. Then we pull together a budget. These things don't, these kind of happen at the same time. But our team, so the finance team and myself, meet with the principal and special ed directors of each building individually to go through their entire service plan. Then we take all of that. We still, this year, had to submit it to the Agency of Ed on October 15th. That's supposedly a construct that will go away with Act 173, but I'm sure they will ask for some prediction of our spending. So we send something off to the state, and then we keep going through the process because we continue to review and update based on, sorry, based on new, things we learn about kids. We have kids moving in all the time, and we also go through subsequent rounds of budget building. So the first round is these meetings, and it's what produces that October 15th version of the budget. Then we have a round two. So round two for us just happened last Thursday. And in some years, we will have a round three. So this is kind of the answer to your question, Colleen. And we will have a round three this year. It hasn't happened yet, but I'm going to talk about some of the things that we'll focus on. Yep?
So next year, does this all get a lot simpler because you're going to know, I don't know when the state's going to tell us, probably what, February after the budget's done, what we're going to get for the block grant? I didn't say that out loud. But I'm assuming we'll find out earlier what we're getting, and it won't matter who moves in or out, or what the needs are? It's always the same, or?
It's a good question. Our revenue will be easier to predict.
Okay.
Yes. And we actually, I mean, they released a calculator that, for what it's worth, was actually helpful, that was last year, to estimate what our census-based block grant. So, so yes, that part will be more predictable. The other thing that gets simpler is we won't be tied so much to this October 15th deadline, although I don't think our internal deadline would be that different from that, actually. It might, we might have a little bit of flex, but we need to do this in order to build the rest of the budget. The piece of kids moving in and out, that's still going to affect us on the expense side. So that part's still complicated.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay. So here are a couple of programmatic things that we have been focused on, I would actually say for the past number of years, just this idea of capacity building. How can we increase our ability to meet the needs of a broader range of kids in our system? These two things you've heard about or read about in reports in the beginning of the year. Last year, we expanded some capacity on our consultation team. We added an alternative and augmentative communication specialist. That's a speech pathologist who specializes in kids who are non-speaking, who use technology to communicate, and a board-certified behavior analyst of PCBA. So that team is now, is now fielding referrals for complex kids that they couldn't in the past. We didn't expand it We didn't expand it a lot. These are still people in our systems who have other jobs, but we've carved off portions of their job to dedicate here. And this year, as you know, we are piloting an intensive support program. They've named themselves Atlas. And it sort of replicates the Howard Inclusion Center. So it's a highly-trained behavioral lead, a clinical lead, so two professionals lead the program. Right now, the clinical person is half-time. And they have a cohort of highly-trained intervention staff, so behavior intervention staff. The goal here is to reduce outside contracts or prevent kids from having to leave the system. This is being piloted with three to four kids right now. And was, is paid for partially by grant. The professionals are paid for out of the grant. The support staff are mostly paid for by not paying tuition and not paying contracts, although we do have some kids that are still in the process of transitioning. So we have a little period of time where we pay both, but once they fully transition, we let go of a contract. We are exploring how we can expand Atlas. We have lots of kids who have really challenging needs, who are very dysregulated and need a lot of expert support. We would like to be able to serve them here if we can. So we're looking to see if we can increase the capacity of that program. We are also studying our continuum of therapeutic supports. So there are some students who need a therapeutic school experience. Right now, that by and large, happens outside of our school. And for some kids, it always will. But there are, our high school has a therapeutic classroom option. One of our K8s has a therapeutic classroom option, and we are exploring whether or not we should increase our capacity there to serve more kids, prevent them from exiting our system. But that's under study. Okay? So that's some programmatic things. So, the next few slides, there are a lot of numbers. What I will do, because you have them all in front of you, is I'm just going to highlight some things that jump out for me. And then, obviously, we'll field questions tonight, but if you discover questions later, you can, happy to follow up some other time. But you see this chart basically every year. It's a little bit of a history, and this is the entire district. So this one is not separated out by school. Gives you a sense, you know, our overall student population, students on IEPs. So we are steadily increasing these percentages. So we serve about 12% of our kids are eligible for special ed. That's below the state average. The state average is 14. But prior to FY '17, we were closer to 11% for a long time. And 11% to 12% is not a huge increase, but that's the direction that it's headed in. We have significantly more kids on 504 plans, and that's been growing. So, Section 504 is a non-discrimination law, and it is for kids who have an identified disability, but it doesn't adversely impact their education as defined by special education. Every few years, I do a deep dive into what all that means, and I'm happy to answer that question. But I would say what, a lot of those increases are kids who have, who struggle socially and emotionally, who have identified disabilities, but they don't, they're actually academically quite strong. So those are some things to highlight, if you are curious. We have the one ad in special educator last year was at high school level for a transition special educator. That finally brought their numbers, this ratio here, into alignment. So, for those of you who've been on the board for a while, know, we've been working for many years and continue to try to keep, to try to have one special educator for every 50 to 80 total students in the system. There's a lot of research to suggest that that number helps a school be able to react to the needs of kids. And the other thing I would highlight that I'll talk about several times is our number of paraprofessionals continues to increase. So this is a number, so we pay a lot of attention to this. We have a guiding principle that says, "We want our most struggling learners to work with our most expert staff," and so we've been working on decreasing that. In last year's budget, we reduced, or intended to reduce, and did because of the position, about 10 paraprofessionals. We also had an extremely high number of kids move in and replaced many of those professionals. And when we reduced, we were reducing what we call non-intensive paras, that by and large were doing, providing academic support. It's an area we want to not rely on them for. The ones we were adding back in were intensive-level paras or specialist-level paras, working with kids with significant behavioral needs. So we were adding back in a different type of para to meet the needs of a really needy population.
Can I just clarify?
Yep.
The paras that you were adding back in, they had specific training that helped them work with specific needs-
Yep.
...for students-
Yes.
...versus someone who did not have training.
Correct.
Thank you.
They either have it coming in, or we provide it when we hire them. Oops, sorry, skipped that. This is a similar chart, but compares by school. So, it just breaks out the numbers a little more. Overall, our early childhood numbers are, continue to be sort of variable. We have that increase in 504, Shelburne and CBU see that, have seen that most significantly. Let's see. I would also highlight that of all of our school systems, Shelburne is the one school who has achieved the goal that we've set around the use of paraprofessionals. They have fewer paras providing academic support than our other schools. Williston is moving closer in that direction, and the other schools, you know, our smaller schools are really holding on to some of those numbers. Yes?
I'm curious, why is that a goal, to reduce the number of academic paras?
Good question. So, this is kind of a generalization, but there's two, by and large, two types of paras in our system. We have a set of guiding principles that talks about where are paraprofessionals really important components of our system. Well, they're really important to support kids who have very specific social-emotional learning needs or personal care needs, to allow them to access the system. Those are paras that we call intensive or sometimes specialist. They have specific training, and they are the ones that allow kids to access education. A use of a para that we're trying to move away from is providing academic instruction, because we want kids who are struggling in reading not to be working with a para. We want them to be working with a teacher. So when we look, we've done a lot of analysis deeper into these para numbers, and the kids who need that level of support, we have a lot of work happening right now to improve programming for kids, to make sure that if you have a one-on-one, you really need one. So we're not really looking to reduce that number, but we are looking to say, I, we want our academic services provided by teachers, by and large, not paras.
Licensed educators.
Correct. Yep.
I'm just curious about the number of students, the comparison between Shelburne and Williston, the number of students on 504 plans. Williston with higher student population, with just 21 students, twice as many in the Shelburne School. And I'm, I'm wondering if you think that any of that can be attributed to the robustness of the support system in the Williston School versus Shelburne, or is it just coincidental? But that's quite a significant difference.
It is a significant difference. I think, I think it's more than coincidental. I think it's related to student supports. I also think it's related to, the one thing with 504 is that there are some kids who receive support and, for whatever reason the practice is, not to place the student on a 504 plan. So, an example of that is, you could have a, if you have a peanut allergy, that fits the criteria for a, to be, to be on a 504 plan. But in many of our schools, they are very well-supported by a health plan through the nurse's office. So, some of those numbers, I think, have to do with variability in decision-making around it. I also think that, one, it's also, it's also related to, often, kids who are eligible under Section 504, their parents may request special education evaluation. And similarly, someone who is supported with an EST might request 504 eligibility. So we have different patterns of requests for that kind of thing. But it's a good number to continue looking into. They're very, this is part of the reason why we look at that individually with all the administrators, so that they can say, hm, I wonder what that's about.
And do you envision over time, moving towards a more uniform way of defining what the criteria might be from, to fall into one category versus another?
Absolutely. Especially for 504. Because 504 really is a federal law, so the variability should be less. EST is something that we create a lot of our internal structures for. We've actually done a lot to right-size those numbers. Those numbers looked very, very variable in the past, and they look much more consistent proportionally. So this is a question that we get asked often, is, are the, is the severity of disabilities that we serve in special education changing? And for many, many years, the answer to that question was no. By and large, they stayed consistent. This is, so, I won't, offline, I can tell you what, these are disability codes according to the law. But an intensive disability would be a student with an emotional disturbance, a student on the autism spectrum, a student with multiple disabilities, whereas a mild disability is a specific learning disability in reading, for example, or a speech and language impairment. And over time, you can see, just going back at the bookends of this chart, about 25% of our students had significant disabilities a couple of years ago, and 39% had mild. Those numbers are switching. So we have about 30% of our special ed population has significant disabilities, and this number's going down a little bit. So I think it is, I don't think, I know, we have meatier kids in our system. So when we talk about a special ed budget that is coming in, we have kids whose program, whose supports that they need to access their education, that they need a lot of support. Okay, shifting gears a little bit. So the next two charts are new. We haven't shared this in the past, but one of the things that we realized is, we spend, so a significant portion of special ed services are supported by grant. So I wanted to give you some of that information. The biggest grant we have is called IDEA B. It's an allocation. Our allocation is about $1 million a year. This gets factored in as revenue, so it's, it is something that you see in revenue, but, but we've never really outlined what we spend on it. So we fund out of IDEA B, primarily the big-ticket items. We fund our community skills program at CBU, which is a transition program for kids with disabilities. We fund our consultation team, that's Jen Randall, and then that's those additional FTE that I talked about, the experts. We fund our Atlas professionals, and we fund a significant portion of administration, so a portion of my salary, a portion of our admin assistant's salary. So that is IDEA B. There's a portion of IDEA B that is able to be spent on non-special ed kids with a prevention in mind. So our district literacy leader that we create, that position was created this year as a result of the literacy audit last year. We fund that out of this early intervening services. Last year, we funded the audit through this. We're also piloting a software platform that helps classroom teachers be able to see what kinds of accommodations and modifications kids need. It's attached to our jump rope system. I should have clarified, this chart, not all of these are special ed. Okay, so Medicaid. In Elaine's presentation, you'll see more about what is in the intervention framework and what people have in their buildings. But in the budget that we're proposing for next year, we will be adding, or paying for more things out of our Medicaid funds. So we pay for our school social workers out of Medicaid. We pay for some supports at CBU. They have a behavior systems coach and a contract for counseling. And we have historically funded part of our student support system for kids not necessarily eligible for special ed, but who have social-emotional learning challenges. We will be increasing the amount of Medicaid dollars that we use to spend that. We have a healthy Medicaid balance to be able to spend down. And then there's a smaller version of Medicaid called Medicaid Administrative Claiming, MAC, otherwise known, or used to be known as EPSDT. And we fund a portion of Christine Lloyd Newberry out of this, and next year, we will be looking to increase our district's SAP FTE through this grant.
Can you remind us of Christine's role?
Yes, she's the Director of Integrated Wellness. So she oversees our prevention programs, so SAPs, mentoring, a lot of the partnerships with community, formerly known as CY. Yep. Okay, so, current budget discussions. So this gets back to the process and where we are. We are still trying to achieve best-practice paraprofessional ratios. That is still a focus for us. We, that is really wrapped up into the systems-level support we have for kids with challenging behaviors, so that the safe harbor structures that we are supporting the K8 buildings in developing. When we, when we raise those structures, we, we may be able to have kids not need support so often. Some of the things being talked about, I already talked about expanding Atlas. We would like to entertain the idea of adding a school psychologist, so that one of our school psychologists, who is a board-certified behavior analyst, could be pulled out to actually function as a BCBA and support teams that way. We don't know that, that that will happen. That is not in the current budget. So that is not a part of that $250,000 go-get. But what we are doing, whoops, I'm going to do that after. Round three is, how are we going to get to that 250? But it's also, can we get to the 250 within the special ed budget? And if we can't, that becomes a conversation with our whole administrative team about, then where, then where does that come from? So, round three is all of the principals, all of the special ed directors, and all of central office. It's a collective conversation. Yes, they talk as buildings, and then we, we come back as a group. They will get a lot of information to make these decisions. But we do ask ourselves that question. This isn't just about arbitrarily cutting 250,000. It's, can we do that? And if not, where else does it come from? And if we, if our district wanted something like this, then that takes that 250 and makes it 350. I don't know that that is going to, that that's ultimately what they'll decide, but just want to give you a sense of how we, of the types of things we talk about. So, this last chart, this is sort of with Jean's caveat. So this, this is just the change that we've had over the past number of years. We've been able to hold our special ed budget relatively low for a number of years. Not so this year. So we have significant increase in salary and benefits. That's largely the support staff. Just to give you some context, in large part, these additional positions are serving kids either that weren't in our system when we built last year's budget, or their needs significantly changed. One of our two smallest schools last year welcomed 14 students, all on IEPs last year. One school. That doesn't count the ads in the other schools. And they managed to do that by only adding two staff, which is pretty impressive, given that. So, these numbers are, they are there because they're meeting the needs of real kids. We have decreased tuition, so this, and partially, we've decreased tuition because we've brought kids back. And when we bring kids back and spend less here, we need to add staff to do that. And we do it with the goal of eventually getting those kids in a place where they won't need that much. need that much.
Can you elaborate on what you mean by bring kids back?
Yes. So these students are being educated, or this is the, these are the dollars we spend teaching kids in a private, independent therapeutic special ed school.
So we're bringing them back to college?
Correct.
Okay. So why would that be a tuition, a decrease in tuition?
Because what we, if, so if we were spending $56,000 to send a student to the Baird School, and now we educate them here, we don't pay Baird.
Okay.
So, obviously, this percentage doesn't match these numbers, because this is the percentage we need to get to. Our target is 6.2%. Our current increase right now is higher than that. And that's what we have heading in to round three. Coming.
I have a faulty memory. Can you remind me of Atlas?
Yes. Atlas is the, it's not an acronym, so usually everything's an acronym. That is the name that our esteemed colleagues who created the intensive support program named themselves.
It is a pilot, so you probably shouldn't really know yet.
It is a pilot?
Well, I'm just thinking, if I, if I was talking with a community member about the budget, I would, I wouldn't know how to explain it, and I feel like maybe I missed something.
So one thing you could do is if, I think it was, it's November now, it was either September or October's Board Colt Report had a long description of Atlas.
Thank you for that reminder.
Doesn't tell them, doesn't tell you how they got their name.
Okay.
I'm embarrassed that I don't know the story. I do think it involves Atlas, the world on a shoulder, like, there was thinking behind it.
We're going to do it all here. We're going to take it all on.
Yes, maybe, yeah, maybe that is it.
The world on a shoulder.
But that's Atlas. And that does give you a little bit more of a description of what it is, who's in it, who the teachers are.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for that reminder.
Can you mention therapeutic classroom at CVU?
Yep.
And then another therapeutic classroom at one of our districts, one of our schools?
Yep.
I'm just wondering, could you just describe a little bit about what those classrooms look like?
Yes.
And if there's thought about creating such a classroom in all of the schools eventually? Because it seems like that might be a powerful way of retaining students, potentially, or certainly being able to provide more direct, robust services to them.
That's exactly what we're studying. So the therapeutic classrooms, and they're, obviously, high school and K-8 functions a little differently, but by and large, they are taught by special educators and general educators with specific training. They're usually co-taught. They have a, the K-8 program has a embedded school social worker that's just for that program, and a number of highly-trained support staff. And I would say that those programs, the goal is that students aren't there forever. So even though it is their stu, it is those students' team, that's their classroom, most of them are also assigned. So if you're in high school, you're still assigned to the core. If you are in the K-8 school that has, it's Williston, it's Stride, you've actually seen them. They came in, last year during the, the presentations, they came and talked a little bit about some of their work. But the kids are still members of their house, their general ed class, and some kids spend four out of five periods a day in the therapeutic classroom, and some spend two periods out of five. And the goal is that you ease them back into that site. So the study, what's currently happening right now is a group, so two of the people who run the K-8 program, one of our high school people, our high school outplacement coordinator, so she's the one who case manages kids who are not here, they are all part of a design team that's studying. And I would say, I don't know that we need one in every building, but we might need more than one site. And we might need a site to be accessible to kids in the system. The other part of that conversation, which is not related to special ed, is in our student support systems, we're also trying to, we keep calling it safe harbor. It's one of those things that eventually will have a name, it doesn't have a name.
So it has five names.
It has five, that's the problem, actually. Correct. And that's a structure that's not a therapeutic classroom. It's actually not meant to be a therapeutic classroom, but it is a space, and highly-trained people attach to a space. Because there are kids in our system right now who maybe don't have an identified disability, but are extremely dysregulated. And when they get in a bind in the classroom, they probably shouldn't go right back to the classroom. And we, those structures don't exist in every building. So I also think that as we increase that capacity, we may or may not need therapeutic classrooms. Because that's pretty far down the continuum. It's something that we are exploring. I think we need more of it. It's also, we want, we want to be cautious about building that. Because if you build a therapeutic option, suddenly, if you build it, they'll come. And we'll have lots and lots of people saying, oh, I know a student who would really benefit from this. And is that because, you know? So we just have to be careful about it.
And I think there's a parallel to the situation when you talk about the best first instructions in classrooms.
Yes.
We're talking a lot about that, especially in the work that we're doing in literacy. I think it's the same thing with behavior. We want the best behavior, people to be our classroom teachers. We want them to have all of the strategies to deal with dysregulated kids.
Yep.
Knowing that there is a place for a student to go when that's not a reasonable expectation. But we certainly don't want it to be like, oh, you don't have to worry about behavior teacher. Because there is a direct correlation between teachers who have good classroom management and teachers who are really good teachers. Right? So we don't want to do anything that's going to inadvertently pull that out.
Other questions?
So when do we hear back from you?
So that's a good question. I can, so we lead is, so our round three meeting is at our next lead, which actually doesn't happen until after the December 3rd. So it won't be at the next meeting, it would be at the one after, the December 17th. If you want an update, we can get you that.
Excellent.
Yep. There was a question from the audience. Could you just state your name for the?
Yeah, Ethan R. Leonard.
Thanks.
It seems like the number of kids in the district is going up, and the number of kids on IEP is up, and the number of kids on 504 is up, and severeness of those kids on those plans is up. So it seems pretty obvious that need is up. I'm just wondering and a little concerned that our $250,000 challenge, is it rooted in any assessment to try to correlate need with cost? It seems like it's just targeting 25% of a big number, which I'm not really okay with. If we're target, trying to correlate cost with need, okay, let's, let's dive deeper. If we're just seeing a big number and reacting and saying, let's target that, that doesn't really seem like it makes sense. And I'm wondering if any assessments have been done to try to correlate those two dollars, need versus cost in the $250,000 challenge?
I really appreciate the question, because the, the fact that we have to meet the needs of kids and want to do that well is real. And I would say that's part of why we are having another round of discussions about it. We have a target, but as I said, if we decide that we can't pull that out of the special ed budget, then we do have to have a conversation, because there, you know, we do, we have an obligation to present a budget that is acceptable to the board and the community. I also think that we are obligated to provide services to kids on IEPs, and the law doesn't tell us how to do that. So there is room for service delivery examination to say, is there a way we can do this better? And does that way cost less money? I, I think we have an obligation to ask ourselves that question. I would want folks to know that the administrators sitting around the table all have that same understanding of the kids in the building and the neediness of them, and will make decisions based on ensuring that we will still meet their needs.
Because obviously, we have the students that have needs, and we have the responsibility for that education. But this is more of sort of like a budget question. From a budgeting perspective, as our budget in special ed goes up, do you look at outside social programmings that don't necessarily, that are not in our bailiwick, but the inverse relationship to like what's in the, happening in the community, and where the resources are falling and failing, and then how that's coming into your budget and our increase? And do we ever put that out to the community? It just might be interesting to look at, oh, by the way, this social program was defunded. We noticed a rise here. This happened, we noticed a rise here. We don't really talk about it in those terms.
No. You're probably right, related to the CBSD budget, I'm not sure we do talk about that. But what you're saying is real. I think five or six years ago, the state convened a study of the amount of mental health services that are now being provided by schools. And that number was staggering. I actually should dig up the study. We were talking recently at a statewide meeting about how that should probably be redone. Because the reality is, the bulk of the increase in our costs are for things like behavior interventives, and therapists, and social workers, and, you know, and highly-specialized programs. So it is true. And I think it, you know, I think it's an important narrative. It's, but it happens because education is, and people will say, sometimes cynically, the provider of last resort. We have, we take every kid. We don't get to put them on a waitlist. There are kids on waitlists for psychiatric services in Vermont, because we have very few child psychiatrists. But we can't put kids on waitlists. So, yeah.
Just a quick follow-up. I guess, the, the challenge just seems odd, I guess. I can understand if you ask your teams, who really are the source of a lot of these numbers, if you ask your teams, you know, are you sure this is correct? And are you sure you're being as efficient as you can? That's a good question. But issuing a challenge of 25% of your budget that's not rooted in anything is the wrong approach. You should either, what you're doing is you're, you're either issuing a challenge you have no intention to meet, or you're issuing a challenge that's not based in any assessment of where that challenge should be. And I guess I would just caution that, you know, that's, that could be dangerous.
I think you're making comments, and I, the board's hearing your comment. I would, I just, a couple things. It's not 25% of our budget, our special ed budget.
25% of the increase.
Right.
It's $18 million.
25%.
It's $18 million.
25% of the increase.
No, it's $250,000 on $18 million.
The increase is a million, year to year. It's 25% of the increase.
Right.
Yep.
And I, but I think that's the point that I was making about round three. I think that is, that is exactly how we have those conversations. And this board would hear it. If we were to come back to this board on December 17th and say, we couldn't find it, we would do that. We have done it in the past.
And then it becomes a conversation of, you know?
Are we happy to accept that increase without the 250? Or do we look to the regular ed budget to make cuts? Which is...
Well, I'm glad that you said that, because I've been wanting to jump in a couple times and say, because we've started these conversations, and this is a education conversation, not just special ed conversation. Greg is sitting here, we've, we've had it with every one of the principal teams, that like, we can't look at this as like, at just special ed. There, there's such an intersection with how the work is done now and how we meet the needs of kids, that to just say, okay, special ed, go do this, would be foolish. So we really are looking at everything and saying, it could be that we would say, we don't want to touch anything there, but if we have all of this here, then that might mean that we don't need something else here. So we are already at the get-go. Megan has organized this, so that we're looking at it as general ed and special ed together.
Any other questions or comments on special ed?
I guess we'll hear round three B in December. Thank you, Megan. Just going to note, we're five minutes ahead of schedule. We're 6.0 reports to the board, 6.1 committees. First up is finance, budget, and facilities, and the budget communication plan.
So we talked about the budget communication plan. I don't know if everyone knows on the board, but we're doing these short videos with, that discusses what we're doing for the budget planning. We've done two. I did the first one to introduce the concept. Jean and Elaine did a great one based on general education. And Megan, I believe, is doing one this week, or already did one.
Just did it today.
Just did it today, that will be posted next week for the special education. Jocelyn was at a PTA meeting, and I guess she got really good feedback on the first one, so I'm excited to keep going with that. And please, if you guys hear stuff in the community, please let us know, because we will adjust what we need to, to make sure we're getting what we need out. We talked about the budget view, Jean talked about that today. We went through the first quarter FMR, which I believe Jean will talk about a little bit later today, too. So I'm going to let her go into detail about that and try to get Lynn ahead of her agenda a little bit quicker.
Well, I do, just on the, on the budget view, we talked a little bit about communications between the committee, and so what we did, we did 1100, direct instruction. And I'm going to pass these around, so you can see what they are. This is like, sort of a budget data deep dive kind of, you could call it a primer, just on function 1100. What, what, the committee's going to have a, has a binder like this, but the whole board will have access to a virtual binder. I'll give you a virtual folder in Google. And it's not just, it's, so what this does is it explains what's in 1100, how the decisions are made, when it's going to be reviewed with the board, and it references append, all the appendices, like, what's the salary grid, what's the, a lot of data. Number of people by type in each building. So that's all, I'm not going to give, I didn't print everything out for everybody, and it's going to be in a Google folder, and everybody can have that, so.
And just, sorry, forgot about that today. My computer's not working today. So I had, you know, I was all prepared here, and it died on me. But the development of what Jean just discussed was directly related to the feedback we got from the board last year in regards to everybody wanting to be more knowledgeable about how we got to where we were. So this is something that we're hoping will address the, the comments from last year from the board. And if you guys like it, let us know. If you don't, please let us know, because Jean's putting a ton of work into this. This isn't something that's just taking a few minutes, and she can stop, if you guys want her to.
In addition to that meeting, I shared a glance, and I'll pass these around, into a budget communication plan. It does include these videos. I've been sharing the videos on the CBSD Facebook page, as well as they are on the CBSD budget page of the website. And then, after we have a few there, I'll send something out in all the newsletters to point people to that place on the website. But just wanted people to have a chance to look at some of the things that are planned. Another new item is that after each of these meetings, we will get together, Elaine and I, and I don't know who else.
Whoever did the presentation.
Yes, and we'll come up with the talking points that are highlights that we want to share, and we'll share those with all building principals, to share with their faculty and staff, as well as, we'll share it back with you and others in central office, and with the local newspapers, to share with our larger communities.
Any questions on finance, facilities, budget communication? Okay, 6.1.2 indicators.
We had a long conversation trying to move us further down the road about both our process as an indicators committee, and also the draft strategic priorities that were floated at the previous meeting. at the previous meeting. I think we're getting to a pretty good place about process and where it's headed, that hopefully does a more deliberate job of connecting academic factors to budget decisions, both from the board side and the administration side. And our, I think what we've really found in the last couple of meetings is how much we're using the retreat notes. And so if we can very deliberately plan to use the retreat for a data dig like we did last year, but then also build in the time at the retreat for that sort of next step, like what does that, instead of us looking at these notes five months later in the indicators committee, making a few decisions right then and there at the retreat about what that means for our priorities or our work for the next year. It might not all be done in May, but at least leaves us a little, teed up a little bit better for the work in the fall of, okay, we looked at all this stuff. And for example, we're finding a lot in our retreat notes from last year about low-income students, about achievement gap, about literacy, you know, certain trends came up in those notes, and we didn't quite crystallize that into the next step of what to do with it yet. So we're thinking about a cycle that includes that. And that really becomes kind of the heart and soul of the indicators committee work, preparing for that, digesting that annually.
Okay, 6.1, HR, labor.
So spent a bit of our time talking about the status of the negotiations between the state and the teachers' union. Mark could give you a better idea on the, on the timing of expected events, but basically they are now enbinding arbitration, or will be going to binding arbitration. Do you recall, when do they have to do their submissions and...
They were talking about the healthcare negotiations, and they met for two full days earlier this month, and final reports were due the 15th. And the arbitrator will make a decision by December 15th.
So the way this works is each side is submitting sort of their last best offer.
And the arbitrator will pick one, and that'll be the, you know, what, what the agreement is for all schools in Vermont for the next fiscal year. So we then discussed that, you know, we, we haven't scheduled anything with the, with the Champlain Valley Education Association yet, and we do have a couple of committee meetings scheduled with them to deal with some things from the last contract. But we really don't expect negotiations to get going until after the arbitrator's decision is known and how that's going to affect healthcare. That's pretty much it.
Any questions? We do have an executive session on negotiations after this. Okay. 6.1, policy.
Do you want me to just do it quick?
Yeah.
Grab it. So, policy committee, we're meeting once a month. You have minutes in the board packet that you can take a look at, and I'll just, I mean, 20 seconds or less. You're seeing one of, we did the flag policy last month. You're seeing a policy for consideration today that we're going to hopefully adopt next month. And going forward, the committee has decided to look at the VSBA model policies that have just been put out. They went through and updated them, and we're dividing and conquering. We're going to try a system where committee members pair up and two people review each of, you know, four policies, let's say, and try to move things through that system. So we'll see how it works. And you have links. You can actually go and, and see what it is that we're working on. So within the report, the board members have been added as a view. I think you have view rights and comment rights, so you can see what it is that we're working on. And our next meeting is Thursday. Anything else, Mark?
No, I mean, part of our work we're going to be talking about in a couple of minutes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a real, weird question.
Yep.
Are the policies, once they're written and/or revised, copy edited? By whom?
So we have a multi-tiered process. First of all, we take a look at it as a committee. Then there's the process that it comes back to the board at some point, but as far as...
I'm talking about like, you should have a capital B here, not a lowercase b.
Well, and it made me...
Like, real nitpicky.
Yeah, just, I mean, if you see something like that, just let me know.
Let you know.
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know if there was a formal copy edit process.
Well, you just go to the, go to the comments section, you know, when you look at it in a Google Drive, just add a comment to it.
I would say, if it's something like that, that the policies that are in place give the authority to administration to make that sort of a change.
Yeah, that doesn't, that doesn't go through another review process.
If you sent me an email, I would tell nobody.
Okay. Yeah.
On the agenda, I'm just getting a link that's going to the Dublin City Council's flag policy. That probably is an error. Unless we're going to adopt Dublin city policy straight up.
That would be fun, huh?
I wonder about that. I was like, was that a sample?
Well, I, I don't know. It worked for me, but it may be because I had different, I thought it worked for me.
It just says, well, coming off this agenda, and it says, see flag, draft flag policy that leads me to Dublin, which is great.
So we'll have to fix that if their links are not working.
Yep.
If you go to the Google Drive, there's, you know how we've been working with, in our committees, you each have a Google Drive? If you go to that page on your Google Drive, you should see, I think it's four folders for CBSD, and there's one folder that's for policy, and you can go in that way. And they're locked down, some of these folders, depending on who needs to have access to it.
Any other questions on the policy committee? Okay, 6.2, cult report.
Cult report. So there are a couple of board members who have gotten a shout-out in the cult report, and I just want to mention, I think we all know that Barbara Martin is representing, she's representing herself on the Act One Committee, the state. So that is great to have Barbara on that committee. Have you met yet, or...
No, our first meeting is coming up on the 26th.
Yeah, that's great. And Colleen McKinnon is on the VSBA board.
Are you?
Congratulations. So that's great.
Excellent. Well done.
So we have good representation.
So just to remind your VSBA board, if I may.
Yes, yeah.
There are 892 or something like that, board members in the state. Don't quote me. There are a lot of board members in the state.
A shy of a thousand.
And the state is divided into regions, and each of the 11 regions in the state has two board members. And so I'm on the, I'm representing Chittin and Grand Isle, one of two board members. And the way that happened, there was another board member who had to step down, and the regional meeting that happens every fall, that's when board members get reelected. So I'm fulfilling one year, the second year of a two-year term, because somebody else stepped down.
Congratulations.
Yeah, it's very interesting. I went to the first meeting. Pardon me?
Oh, that's well-attended, the regional meeting.
The, the regional meeting? The regional meeting that was in Winuski, that, there were probably, I don't know, at least 20 or more, I don't know, probably more than that.
Yeah, usually more than that.
30. And then the VSBA board meeting meets once a month in Montpelier, and we had, I don't know, 15, 16 people, including those who had to call in because of travel.
We've been trying, since I've been on the board, to get somebody on that, on the state board, so it's awesome that we finally have some representation on there.
That's great.
Yeah, we even changed the day of the week that we were meeting.
We did, just so we could do that.
Yeah. Bonnie, do you want to say something about the digital learning plan?
Yes, I have been working with all, each of our school's digital learning leaders initially to start the discussion around the development of a new digital learning plan. It used to be called the tech plan for each district. It used to be required for E-Rate funding, and it no longer is by the AOE. However, we determined that we wanted to make sure that we had a plan in place to help us think long-term, or at least out three to five years around what do we want to do with digital learning in our district, and where are we headed, and start laying out some steps for how we're going to get there. So we've just really begun the process. Of course, we had meetings scheduled last Tuesday and today, both snow days, so that has impacted our, our work, but we'll get back on track. And then, once we've got something, it's your fault, Jean.
However, what a good segue to the next meeting, right? So Jean, do you want to say a little bit about backup internet? Which might be maybe to snow days and winter days.
Right, so if I know this in here, is that, you know, emergency preparedness is not just for the schools. We were doing the, the work at central office, and this predated me, but all of our internet for all the schools goes through central office. It's a, it's a dark fiber hub. So when we're doing the emergency preparedness, we're worried about our servers going down or this going down, and then we realized if the, if it was, if the building was inaccessible, inaccessible, or burned down, we would have no internet for a month at any of our schools.
Oh, dear.
So Mike Campher already, because you know who Mike, Mike always thinks the worst can happen. He plans for it. It's awesome. But he's, he's been working, he's been working on that for a while, a backup plan, but it's a little bit expensive. It's going to be $14,000. By the way, CBU has a backup line, and we're trying to do backups. And these would be much smaller capacity lines. They're basically, keep the, the phones, our phones are voice-over IP, you know, the phones working, the, the back office, the, you know, the ASOP, which is how it gets, that kind of stuff. It's not, you wouldn't, the school would not be able to do the normal things they do with students, but it would be enough to keep it functioning, right? So he was on this, it was a lot of money. We were hemming and hawing whether or not we could. And then this year, we twice have lost internet access. So Friday, the November 1st, out completely at all our schools. Taking attendance, you know, is, is a scramble without internet. So, so we've, so we've decided it's time to move this project forward, so we're just going to go ahead and get it done. Yep.
So, Mike's planning a backup for the internet. That's awesome. But, you know, the fact that we, you could be out of internet for a month, is, just hearing that is pretty scary. What about the teachers? Do they have a backup plan of how they would teach? Because I know a lot of schools and teachers rely on internet to teach.
Well, I think that day, it was pretty difficult, right? We heard about that.
Yeah, we had an unplanned day of unplanning.
Right.
Which I think is also healthy every now and then, but you're right. We, we, our teachers do rely on digital tools for a part of teaching.
Right. How did we do that?
Well, it would, I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's not ideal, because I think that they use the technology in a really good way. But, I mean, I think that they're, we have really good teachers. I think that they would be able to figure it out.
And central office has been there a long time.
And, you know, they just hold a class in the summer.
We can have year-round schooling.
I could just keep canceling.
All right. Oh, yeah, we're still on cult.
Yeah, that's it. Unless there are any questions about any other part of the report.
I just have a question about digital learning in Google. So all of our, well, I know a chunk of the middle school in Williston uses Google Classroom. I assume that's pretty much across the board. So Google Classroom, I imagine, are they still, are they subject to our policies that we have done recently with our vendors? Because with Google and their data mining activities, and now all of our kids' information are there, like, is there a statement that we should be making about the safety of our children?
We actually have a statement to go along with all of the privacy policies that we're doing, and Mike is likely, and perhaps me, going to be sharing more about this on December 17th. But we do have a statement around Google, because, you know, every little school district around the country and around the world, they're not going to get a signed agreement from Google.
Right.
So, but however, a lot of what they believe in, in terms of schools and education, aligns with the agreement that we would ask them to sign. That has been researched.
Jean, I saw a presentation on this topic at the annual superintendent school board association meetings, so.
Were people skeptical, or...
No, it's, well, Jean?
One thing I would say is that they gave Bonnie and Mike kudos for trying to drive this at state level, so.
Oh, no, no, I don't mean about us. I mean about Google.
Not about Google. I mean, I think, I think that's, I think Google is, if we could get everything but Google, we'd be in pretty good shape, because Google's a very professionally run, so, especially in Vermont, we're not going to affect that. So we're still working on everything else, I would say. Yep.
Principals' report. Any questions on the principals' report? Angela?
I was actually really encouraged to read in the principals' report that, from the Shelburne bit, that the paras are participating in PD, and I wondered if that's true in all the schools.
It was true in all the schools. It was organized centrally, and it happened here. I actually wrote, included that in the October cult report.
Okay.
Right, so on October 18th, all of the paraprofessionals, both drivers, lunch workers, actually, it's in this month's cult report, because it's part of the equity piece.
Right.
But that is what they're talking about.
Oh, that's what they're talking about, when they talk about conscious discipline?
The conscious discipline.
Oh, so they, so they followed up.
Yeah, all of the, so it's a good question, and I actually got to sit in on some of their book study sessions. It's great. Each, so all of the paras in the system by contract have, are entitled to professional development. Each school handles it a little bit differently in terms of what they provide and how. I didn't read the report, but, but I'm familiar with that, so it sounds like they highlighted that part. But yes, all of them have it. It's a combination of things like that. It could be speakers, it could be, it's often our own teachers coming in and running workshops. At the high school, there is a fabulous support staff member who organizes it for the high school. So everyone has some version. Not, not everyone has read that particular book and done that, but...
Sure, yeah, I just thought, and then, I thought, I took that note before I heard your presentation, and so then hearing the focus on...
Yep.
So this is...
...specialized PD. Yes. So this, that October 18th was the first event, but there is a plan to actually stipend one of the paras to kind of coordinate that for all of us, so.
Any other questions on the principals' report? Lead design teams. This is the first time that we've had this...
It's all a matter of calendar, right? So Lynn just said, hey, did you write up the, our meeting with the student council, which Lynn and I met with the student council last Thursday. Great meeting. It's not in here, because it doesn't meet the deadline.
Right.
That's why the executive committee minutes aren't in there, and that'll be the next time. But, yeah, so it's the same thing with them. They're, they're always a month behind. But you'll be getting this every single time. So this is the important work that we're doing at the, you know, the entire admin team, and every one of us serves on one of those design teams, and you'll get caught up each month about what's going on.
Did anyone have any questions about, about that? Okay. Student council.
Yeah. We did have a great meeting with them, didn't we?
We had a great meeting, and I would say that we asked for feedback, or Elaine asked for feedback, on what the students thought maybe we were missing from our equity audit, and you guys came up with some really great suggestions. But, go ahead.
I mean, it was great to have you guys there for that meeting. I think just in general, some things that have been going on in the school. To end Halloween, we had a big school-wide Halloween contest, costume contest, which was just like, really fun to get everyone involved. And then one of the things that's coming up is the annual dodgeball contest, which is actually this Friday. And again, that's a really great way where the entire school gets together for an activity. So those are two of our big activities, I guess.
Yeah, the next one, this Thursday, Elise and I are part of more than 60 students who are sleeping out with Spectrum. That's a big push that our, one of our co-presidents, Mia, has really looked into. So we've heard from Mark Redman twice now, and so our entire school's been pretty educated on the work that Spectrum does and how that impacts kids like us. And so, no matter the weather, we're sleeping out Thursday night, we're going to school. We both have tests Friday morning. We both have tests Friday morning, first block, so it'll be a fun time.
We were impressed with, like, the agenda that you have, that you meet at 7:10 in the morning. And the conversations are on the table. It's really impressive. And how many, like, I think there were 25 there that day. And I noticed at 7:10 in the morning, and I only saw like one nameplate that didn't have a person behind it.
Yeah.
So it's a great group. Okay. Jean, the long-awaited first-quarter FMR. It even got its own separate email, so everyone would focus on it.
Late, again. First-quarter FMR is only through the end of September, so it's only four weeks. So it's not a whole lot. It doesn't tell us a whole lot yet. We are aware of some headwinds, but at this point, we're, we have a lot of time to try to make them all up. So we're forecasting, basically, we're going to hit our budget on the expense side. We have some very good news running on the revenue side, which we're, we are very sure of. So it looks like it could be another good year.
Does anyone have questions on the FMR? I have one question.
Yes.
On the summer school? Yep. I thought that we had budgeted, is the, are we talking the CVU summer school or is this a different thing?
This is all the summer schools.
So I thought we had increased in last year's budget because it had been underfunded in the past. Did I, did I make that up?
So we did on CVU, what we did with the CVU summer camp, which is primarily for incoming ninth graders, is it used to be a standalone, like food service or access. It was a standalone fund. And it collected fees and it spent money. And if there was a shortfall, it came out of the general fund. And we made the decision last year, I think last year's budget, that this is really an important, critical part of the education system to make ninth graders successful. So we took it out of being its own special fund and we just put it into the general fund. That's what we did last year. So we just sort of formalized the subsidy, but we didn't increase it. This, what we're seeing this year, and we're, Megan, you have to help me. We're going to do a little, we're doing some digging to figure out what's happening, or Jeff knows too. But the accumulated cost of all the summer programs, as when you have people actually plug it into a function code that says summer school instead of the $30 million regular ed budget, is more than we anticipated. And so it's over. It's already been spent. So, you know, so it's going to, this is a real number. And we're trying to do the work now to, you'll see that in the, actually, I didn't pull it out, but it is also assumed that that's real money, that it's in the next year's budget that I showed you earlier. We put money in there to cover this kind of overrun. What we're trying to do is, maybe one of yous can talk to the summer school initiative.
Is it new money or moved money?
That's not clear.
We still don't know yet.
I mean, I think what we found is that historically, every school makes its own, I should also separate. Special education runs extended school year and that is actually budgeted for. So that's separate because that's part of the special ed budget. It's, but each school, or most of the schools historically, run some sort of summer program for non-special ed eligible kids. And before consolidation, they found that money in lots of different places. So once consolidation happened, we started, and we're having really good conversations about, shouldn't we have a more unified approach to summer programming? What are our beliefs about what should be available to kids in the summer? And what's the best way to move forward? And it was in those conversations where we're talking about good programming for kids, that we sort of uncovered that, you know, when you're paying existing staff, it just gets coded to their salary. It's not. Exactly, right. It's not like a budget necessarily. The exciting part from a programmatic standpoint is I think there's a lot of leverage around the idea that we could do better things for a broader swath of kids if we pooled our resources. Maybe we have a couple of sites and we have different types of summer programming. We're pretty far from executing all of that, but we're starting the conversation.
I suspect that clearly the money, it's people who, it's, we've been doing summer program for a while. So clearly that we've been paying people. So it's not like we are going to choose to spend this extra money. On the other hand, I think they're growing. I think it used to be you hid $9,000 somewhere in your $20 million budget and no one noticed. But they are, they seem to be growing and it's popping out. So it's probably a little bit.
Can I ask a quick question? Can parents recommend that their child be in a summer school program? Or does, do staff, do, does the school have to make that decision? I guess I'm wondering, how does a child, how does a student enter into summer school?
And right now, it's variable per building. Because for someone, what we discovered is that some schools sort of say, this is the amount of staff we have. Here's our capacity. And so when that is true, then it is teacher-selected. So often, kids who either are on an AST or are fragile for whatever reason. Other schools, it's much broader. Other schools grow the program according to how many people sign up. So that's one of those things that differs. So it kind of depends on what school you're in, what the answer to that question is. Unless you are eligible for special ed, in which case it's your IEP team that makes that decision together.
Let me just mention the back of the last page of the FMR is the list of construction projects that we've been happily spending the million dollars that you all supported and the community gave us to spend and making a lot of good progress on a lot of projects. Kudos to the facilities guys who have got a lot of work on their desk, but also thank you again for supporting this initiative. It's been very, very useful.
Which is probably out of place, but it just jogged my memory. Was something wrong with the Shelburne sidewalk and they had to dig it up and do it again?
Yes. On their dime. Yeah, it was not done correctly, so we made them dig it up and do it again.
Was it because of like ADA?
Yeah, well, it was something about the height, you know, yeah, ADA compliance, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, 7.0, discussion matters. 7.1, policy. This is the discussion of policy D9, public complaints about personnel. This is the first time the board will have the discussion on it. If there are revisions, it'll go back to policy and come back to us next month for action. Actually, we don't have a.
It's in February now.
February.
Oh, we can do it next month?
Well, budget, we don't have a regular place.
Oh, I always try to sneak more stuff into our meetings.
We're going to have a special Colleen.
Can we make that mark?
Hey!
No!
You're still here.
We'll do it before the committee meetings, before you're officially off.
Okay, so anyways.
What's new in that? Is that what you want to know? Do you want me to start? You want to do it or?
If you want me to start?
Yeah, go ahead.
In the packet is, as marked up, D9. The committee made some, I would say, minor changes, but also gave the board a little more discretion in how they handle these matters.
Topic for discussion, I'm not sure which side I sit on. But should we be specific and say the board will make the decision in an executive session? So we're not, you know, we, no?
I think that's, I think the initial discussion about whether a hearing gets held is in an executive session. And then a board hearing, you could bring it into executive session if necessary. But in general, you'd probably have it.
And just a reminder that, you know, part of the change in the policy is to clarify that the board is not considering whether or not we like the superintendent's decision. That has nothing to do with it. What we're considering is whether or not superintendent followed policy and protocol adopted by the district, superintendent or designees, whatever the system is. And so we wanted to be sure that we clarified that we're not getting into the weeds with examining a decision.
Should we be more specific with that in policy? I didn't see that.
It is specific.
The last sentence.
And it has, there's a sweet little word called if. I mean, the if in the middle of a, one of the paragraphs, if the board, we could choose not to hear it. So if the board chooses to hear it, and then the.
Just to drag it back to the comments earlier. Some of this language came directly out of the VSBA model policies, which have been altered a little bit. And we altered a little bit to follow.
Does anyone have any other?
Are there any questions or concerns? Because we'd like to, we adopt this at the next meeting. And if there are concerns, it'd be nice to address it now.
Yeah, I just thought, you know, just the title, public complaints, didn't sound good to me. So I was thinking, how about thinking of public concerns? And I don't know if that, you know, that kind of is a different category. But I just didn't like the complaints because it might not be a complaint. And it sounds like, I don't know. That was my first take as I read it last night.
Well, we did talk about the title and we pulled, we did change it a little bit. Other, other committee members?
What do you mean grievances?
Well, it's not really a grievance. It's really, it's a complaint. It is a complaint.
Because you wouldn't want concerns coming to the board. You want concerns going to the teacher, then the principal, then the superintendent. And only when it's not resolved.
But that's why it starts, it starts as a concern.
I know.
Supposed to start there and then it gets kind of less.
We wanted to be, so, you know, you can start going to the source and picking up different words. We didn't want to use the word grievance because that has a very specific meaning. And so, you know, we did change the title a little bit, but we did want to keep the word complaint because that we felt was very specific. Ray, we're talking about the title of the policy.
What is the VSBA model policy?
Russ, do you have any?
I was going to say, I think that, you know, in this case, in the policy for this, there is a degree of specificity that, you know, this is a complaint. It's not a concern. It's somebody who has a specific, concrete issue that they want addressed. So I'm not sure that, you know, concern, while it sounds a little nicer or some other euphemism that we might try to come up with, I'm not sure that's as accurate as what we wanted the policy to be. We did, it was called public complaints and that's not necessarily what it is. It's a complaint from members of the public, but it's not, chances are, it may not even become public. But it's from members of the public and that's what we sort of wordsmithed the title of the policy a little bit.
We felt the word complaint rises to a certain level. You know, there's a benchmark there. Whereas concern, we can take care of in other ways.
Any other feedback to the policy committee?
And I don't know, and we had two members of lead, two principals. And so we wanted to be sure that this policy worked for them as well because quite often they get in the middle of whatever, whatever a serious concern might be. But yeah.
Okay.
But I understand what you're saying, but yeah.
Any other? 7.2.
Thank you, Mark, for your help on this.
Legislative breakfast. I'm just looking at my calendar thinking, oh, I'll just tell them the date of the legislative breakfast because it's been set for a long time and I don't have it on my calendar. Did you have it on your calendar?
I might.
We do have it set. It is going to be in.
March, right?
No, it was January because it's the second year of the biennium and we wanted it early. It's the what? Thank you. It's January 13th, 7:30 in the library here. I think, unless anybody has major issues for how we did it last year, I kind of liked, it was kind of a free-flowing conversation. There are a couple of issues I think we're definitely going to want to talk to the legislators about. By that point, we should know the weighting, the new weighting numbers for the equalized pupil, how they've calculated it. That report's supposed to come out.
Well, they, I think that they will have the recommendations.
Right.
But they will be having a lot of discussions about whether or not they will accept the recommendations.
And I think based on a seminar we went to at the VSBA conference on this new weighting, how they determined it, I think we're going to want to have some input probably into that. So if you have ideas for things that you, that you want to have discussed, if you could just forward them to me and then we'll organize them into an agenda. Yeah?
Yeah, I just wanted to add this.
He's editing my spelling apparently.
No.
So Lynn, the process for considering different topics for the legislative breakfast is send you an email?
Yep. And just let me know what you're thinking and we can, we'll work out, we'll work out a brief agenda.
Meeting is at 7:30. I'm just thinking that particularly for parents, that's a tough hour. And if it can't be changed, I'm wondering if people can come in late or if that's awkward or just what that's about.
People do come in late. People have come in late.
Yeah, we're usually, we usually go until nine.
I think it's the standard time for legislators. Like if you look at when they're having their breakfast, and Monday's the day.
Yeah.
So I don't know if they have time afterwards. For us, if it were later than 7:30.
Most of them are on their way to another meeting someplace.
Yeah. But you could, but people do come in late. It's fine. Legislators do.
I was going to say, sometimes they come in late, so.
Okay. And then 7.3, we are well ahead of schedule. Anticipated board member openings. I just, I remember Kevin Morrow saying this a couple of years ago. I'm not asking if you're running again or not. I would just suggest that if you are up for reelection and you're choosing not to run again, it might be time to start looking or letting people in your community know. I think usually the.
You have to have your signatures.
Thank you. The petitions have to be, have to be in by the end of January. But it would be helpful if you aren't going to run again, if you could let me know too. So I kind of know what we're.
As listed on our terms, you're off on the website too, right?
Yes. That would be great. Okay. 8.0, action matters. 8.1, do I have a motion to adopt the facility use fee schedule? Second discussion? I just, oh, go ahead. I was going to say, I just wanted to thank Jean for all of the work that she's, she did on this.
Best job ever, except for this project.
I, I had the pleasure of listening to a Charlotte select board meeting. And they were pleasantly surprised to find out that the cost for Charlotte next year is going down. And my understanding is Williston is going down. So you did a, you did a huge job in figuring it out.
For both of those, but what happened in that situation is we built a very nicely balanced program that would keep us from losing too much revenue. And once they got the numbers, both Williston and Charlotte decided they didn't really need so many hours in the gym and they cut their numbers. So we actually have a bigger headwind now. We have, we lost $70,000 in revenue. This is, you know, that, what did consolidation save us? This is one that went the other way. This has definitely cost us through consolidation. So we have a $70,000 shortfall in the revenue next year that we've tried to patch up, so. But yes, both towns are very happy. No one's, no one's losing any programming, which was our number one goal. None of the towns are losing any of their programming, so. I'm sorry, Jeff, I didn't mean to.
I really appreciate the work that you've done on this chain. It's been a massive undertaking.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 8.2, do I have a motion to approve the board budget goals? Is there a second? Discussion. So you might notice that these board budget goals look really familiar, but nothing like the ones that we discussed in October. These are the ones that we have had for the past two years. And the reason that these are being proposed tonight, as opposed to the other two, is kind of back to what Erin said in what we've talked about in indicators. We need one more meeting, I think, before we're really ready to move the process forward for developing a system of identifying board budget goals that are specific and measurable. And it just didn't seem, it just felt like we were rushing the process to what end. The two goals that we had identified at the last meeting actually are. The two goals that we had identified at the last meeting actually are included in the first draft of the budget. Jean did identify that the early learning goal is in there or money to keep early literacy is in there, money for the equity audit findings is in there. So, it just seemed in my mind that we were just rushing too fast to what end. It seemed to be safer, more conservative to stick with the goals that we've had in the past and get us set up nicely, I think, for our mini-retreat in February to really go through the process of what we're proposing, how these are identified, and then really put it into, to, into, really get it moving for our retreat in May. So, that's the, that's the discussion, how you're, why you're looking at these board budget goals versus the ones we had last month. I'm open to discussion.
I understand the concern about the process and why we're back at this, but I guess I just want to go on record and hope we continue the conversation at the board of, I think that these budget goals will work and we will probably approve them tonight and that's fine, but I, I think they're kind of meaningless because it's really a laundry list of everything that we do and I don't think that is us standing for anything. And then to go back to the conversation that this night started with and if a number is looking high and we are potentially in a difficult position, what do we stand for? What are the priorities if decisions are going to be made? How is, if, if the budget is the one thing really that the board owns and that we're accountable for to the public, what are, how is that then represented in the budget process? And a list that is this detailed or that is this long but vague, I don't think really provides a lot of direction around the budget. So, I, you know, I'm chair of the indicators committee, so I take full responsibility for having, you know, sort of danced around trying to figure out this process for the last couple of years and I'm really glad that we're moving it forward. I understand, you know, I respect your leadership, Lynn, and understand the, you know, the reason to do that, but I do look forward to moving to something that is much more specific and targeted and, and clear about what we really stand for because again, the budget is the thing that the board has to stand behind.
I, I second what you're, what you're saying fully, but as the chair of the Finance Committee, I'm also thankful that we're delaying it one year so we can put enough thought into the goals to have meaningful and realistic goals that we can actually achieve.
I think I have probably somewhat a primitive question, but I mean, when we think about a laundry list, there are a number of different things that we need to attend to in this district. And so, I'm unclear as to why we don't have a long laundry list and why we would move in a direction where we would narrow our budget goals to two or three primary areas. And so, I'm unclear about that.
And I think that's part of that bigger conversation, like what gets, what, what gets identified as a budget priority? What data or what indicators are you utilizing? Who's bringing those forward? Is it, is it the committees, which I think it is, we're all parts of committees, that are, that is, that is doing that deep dive work and bringing to the board, and now I'm getting ahead of myself, in, at the retreat, kind of, here are the, here are the things we've looked at in our committee, here's the data that backs up why we think these are big issues. Board, what do you think? And then, and then it does become a big board discussion of what, what are our priorities? And it was a longer conversation than we could have, that it's a process piece and it's a content piece. And, and the process piece, I think, has to kind of get in place and then we start working on the, on how that content fits in. It's a valid, it's a valid question.
Jeff, I don't know if it, if this helps or not, but the idea would be that, or the idea is that the, the two or three, say, maybe it's five, specific priorities that are identified ideally at the retreat would be mutable. They could change every year based on what we're learning from the trove of data that, you know, that is kind of distilled for us. And so, I think that we would still have, in any future draft, we would still have a, a couple of anchor points, you know, that might, that will be broad and not this broad, but, so, yeah, I don't, I, I, there's certainly a balance to strike where you want to talk about everything there is to care about and, and focus on and there is so much. But then we keep coming back to how we, in the indicators committee conversations, how it would be nice if, if the board budget goals were actually helpful in shaping the budget. And so, for that, you need some specificity, I think.
I'm wondering if, if we want to save some of this discussion for our retreat because I'm sure every single board member here has strong feelings about this one way or the other and I don't know if this, do you want us to be discussing this tonight?
Well, I am well ahead of schedule in terms of time-wise and I just think, I think because what we proposed last month was so radically different than anything we've done and now we're going back to what we did, I, I do want, I do think it's fair for people to be able to, to be okay with it, knowing we are gonna, this is all gonna come back up again in February before you leave.
You kept saying May. I was like, oh, I'm doing this February 1.
No, sorry.
No.
And May. Yeah, so we are gonna do it again.
What, what date is that?
It's a regularly scheduled board meeting in February.
And longer.
And longer, yeah. I'll send out an email, so it's on everybody's calendar.
It is the regularly scheduled board meeting.
I just want two points I want to make. This laundry list is built on many, many years of thought and a lot of work went into this. And I'm thinking through the consolidation process, the Act 46 Study Committee, that a lot of this emerges from some very intensive work done by a lot of people, board members, administrators, faculty and so forth. I'm pleased that there's been a movement to, to back off for now and hang on to what's here and let us be thoughtful about it as a full board. So, I appreciate that there's, that the indicators committee, I know how invested everybody was in trying to move that forward and I can see how that energy happens. You get excited about it. But as a board member who was not part of that process, I'm pleased that I will have an opportunity to participate in whatever emerges over the next year. So, thank you.
Any other thoughts on the, on the board budget goals that are proposed, that you had sent to you or not?
It sounds like board members will work on whatever template is placed in front of us.
Excellent. I like that. Thank you all for being flexible.
You taking a vote on that?
Yeah. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay. 8.3, do I have a motion to accept the Shelburne door hardware bid? Oh, shoot, who was it?
I moved to accept the hardware bid.
Doors and hardware.
Just because I can't wait to talk about it.
Did, Russ, did you second that?
No, I moved it.
Oh, I'm sorry, you seconded it.
I'll second.
That's a fight. Okay. Discussion.
I asked that that get pulled out and looking at the three bids that were submitted, you had one for 27 grand and then two between 40 and 45. And I just was curious why one was so much lower and whether we have experience with that contractor that makes us comfortable. You know, I, I'd hate to be in a situation where you get what you pay for and that we were, you know, penny wise and pound foolish on this one. But, you know, that, that said, if, if you're comfortable with it, I'm just curious why the big difference and, and what our experience with exactitude is or whatever.
It's a really good question, but first, let the record show, Russ wants me to spend more money.
That's what I want to do.
No, it's actually really, it's, it's interesting, one, interesting because I have the facilities directors put out the bids, they have to get three bids, they come and review them with me and we often have this issue where somebody, an outlier seems really low and sometimes the research, it's a small community, the, the guys know what they're doing, they'll reach out, who's worked with you, you know, double check the materials, they, they do a pretty good job and every once in a while, somebody comes in low and we're the beneficiary of that. Funny that you mentioned the sidewalks because that was the reverse. It was a very low bid to do Shelburne and Charlotte. They, the company was convinced us that they could do it. They, we have a performance bond with them in that situation because it was two big projects and they not only didn't do Shelburne properly, but it got to be, school was starting and they never even got to Charlotte. So, you know, so sometimes it comes back to bite us. But we do, I think we do a pretty good job of, you know, the guys that, that work for me there, they, they know the community, they know the providers and they know who to ask. So, in general, I think it works pretty good. But it is, it is a, a very legitimate, every once in a while, we'll get a bid that's low and it's like, let's check this out because I would really like to have that $13,000 to spend somewhere else. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And I'd just like to say, Russ wasn't asking you to spend more money, he was exercising his right as a member of the board. The question, a number that he thought was right.
I just want to point out that I have been, how many times, this has been like, what, 20 board meetings that I have all these and I'm totally prepared to talk in great depth and nobody ever asks me except for the one where I have an FMR and the budget.
The numbers, right? Gets us in the mood. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 9.0 Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Please look closely at the next meeting dates. These are all budget meetings. There'll be no regular business unless something imminent comes up. There could be an executive session, however. So, December 3rd, 17th, 7th of January and 21st of January, all here at CVU.
And we have a committee meeting on the second.
The finance committee. And if anyone else has a committee meeting in December or January, please, we need to let Jane know well in advance so she can warn that, that meeting.
Yeah, I would guess that we'll need to have an HR committee meeting at some point along the way and maybe tie it into, you know, after one of the, one of these budget meetings.
Okay. Oh, that'd be good.
So, on the 17th?
Seventeenth.
Yeah.
All right. I'll make sure it gets added. Okay, do I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss negotiations?
Where we will adjourn from.
Where we will adjourn from, there'll be no action taken.
Okay. So, move.
Second?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Please fill out...
Yeah, and I'll collect them tonight.
Those board meetings.